Good evening. I will call the September Common Council Meeting to Order. Second item of business on our agenda tonight, excuse me, is the roll call. Looks like everyone has reported as present. Thank you all for being here, those in the audience here tonight, and those joining us via the TV. Next item on our agenda is item three, the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer, followed by a silent prayer and leave of invocation. I invite everyone to please stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is attachment number one. The clerk points out that there is one correction that has been made on the August 15th. The date should say August 15th instead of July 15th, right in the opener. Did I entertain a motion on that report or on that item? We have a motion by Stack and a second by Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay. That passes. Next item on our agenda is item number five, the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure here tonight. Those in the audience that would like to address the body on an item that appears on our agenda this evening may do so after being recognized by a council member or myself, in which you will be invited to the podium for five minutes to speak on an item that is on the agenda as been mentioned. You must hit the push button on the base of the microphone so you're picked up on the recording and for live TV at home, for those that are watching us tonight. We also invite you to, or expect you to introduce yourself, your first and last name, and your address. Moving to the next item on our agenda, item number six, my report. Good evening, Alderperson, staff, residents here or watching from home. As with previous month's reports, my goal is to highlight some of the many items that cross my desk or I partake in since the last council meeting. Last month, I joined city leaders committed to developing high road, high level policies, shared prosperity, and efficient government approaches for the Mayor's Innovation Project Summer Meeting. The meeting sessions included discussions on entrepreneurial incubation, community investments in healthcare research, leveraging local health institutions, and facilitating meaningful civic engagement in our community. Of particular interest in the area of civic engagement, we're seeing affirmation that in today's age of technology, citizens have expectations of quickly connecting with government and receiving vital services. I was happy to see that with our GIS specialists preparing applications for release to the public in the near future, Wisconsin Rapids will be well poised to provide services to meet those resident expectations. With solutions to provide, to improve resident experiences with our municipal government, these solutions, we still have many opportunities to consult with the public and find innovative solutions to problems by involving the public through committees and working groups, as we have seen through the formation of Mayor's Councils on beautification, and soon, youth and sustainability. The goals of these groups are not just to fix what might be in disrepair, but to advise city leadership such as myself, and to develop a plan for addressing those opportunities. By bringing municipal leaders from all over the country together, events such as the Mayor's Innovation Project help establish creative solutions to real problems cities like ours face on a daily basis. It's very beneficial for me to partake in many conversations with fellow mayors on these important topics. Further, it was encouraging to see that Wisconsin Rapids is on the right track in many ways in addressing some of the important topics facing all municipalities today. This month, with the start of school again, the safety of our city's youngest residents as they make their way back to classes is at the forefront, with the City of Wisconsin Rapids receiving a federal grant for the Safe Routes to Schools program. Planned projects include replacing pedestrian signals with overhead signals and painting ladder crosswalks. In addition to those projects, several sidewalk installation projects are planned at locations around Washington and Grove Schools, and have been underway for some time, but due to the complexities in this project with right-of-way land acquisition, contractors were not able or interested in bidding the work this fall. A more immediate effort to ensure the safety of our students, the walking school bus will also be starting later this month. The walking school bus, for those that are not familiar with the program, will run Tuesday or Thursday, Tuesday and Thurs, Tuesday to Thursday, I'm sorry, weather permitting, and involves volunteers assisting students with getting to school safely. Bev Galone is a Safe Routes to School Coordinator and is currently accepting applications for volunteers from the public interested in assisting. I encourage anyone interested in helping to contact Bev and participate in one or more shifts. And from personal experience, I can affirm that it is a very positive experience to make that impression on these youth as they head to the school day. This month, one proclamation issued, the National Public Lands Day, which is September 27th. As a celebration of the strong volunteer service commitment in our community, I join state, local, and federal agencies across the country to proclaim September 27th, 2014, National Public Lands Day. In the proclamation, I recognize the importance of recreational opportunities in our city, and encourage shared stewardship and recognition of public ownership through community volunteer efforts. With the new playground equipment having been installed at Poplar Springs Park last week, work is still needed to complete the area around the playground equipment, and it may be an opportunity for an event focused around public lands and readying the playground area for neighbors and residents to enjoy. I hope you find value in the sampling of what my weeks consist of. As a reminder, I encourage residents to subscribe to my community update via the Mayor's page on the city's website, and if you're not online, catch variations recorded on RCCA Media or request a print version from my office. I would also remind at the chief, Fire Chief's request that, given the number of people in the audience tonight, that a doorway do, does remain kept clear for people to leave if they need to. So I think that covers the issue, Dave, unless you've got something to add on that subject. There is an overflow room or the video of this meeting tonight if you do want a seat. There are some seats in the conference room right behind that wall. All right, moving to item number seven, the annexation request, item 7A. Per the request and notice of Alderperson Kirkpatrick, attachment number two, renewal of the petition for direct annexation and an ordinance approving the annexation of property in the town of Grand Rapids located on the northwest corner of Chestnut Street and State Highway 54, which is parcels number 0700312, 00313, 00313A. The petition and ordinance were not adopted at the council meeting held August 19th. The applicant is Aspiris Clinics Incorporated on behalf of Gordon and Donna Manke Trust and MWH Real Estate, see attachments number three, four, and five in your council packet. With that, I will turn it over to Alderperson Kirkpatrick, who made the formal renewal for the petition for direct annexation.
Thank you.
Point of order? Please hit your microphone, Tom, so they can pick up.
Point of order, thank you. Sorry about that. Before we get into this, I do have a few questions, just on, I guess, the, how we got to the point of, and questions with that. I guess, and these will go to the, our city attorney. This is a motion to reconsider, is it not?
No, it's a motion to renew. I sent you materials a few weeks ago explaining all of the different motions regarding a motion to reconsider, a motion to rescind, a motion to renew, and the difference. But this is a motion to renew.
Okay. Would you then explain who can do that?
Any member of the body can do that.
At any point in time?
That's correct. Well, as long as the, there are no time limits with the underlying petition or application. For instance, the annexation petition needs to be approved within 120 days of its filing, so as long as we're within that 120 days, then it can be renewed and looked at and approved. If, for example, we were outside of the 120 days, then the applicant would need to file a new petition for annexation, and then have it approved by the state, and we would have to do all the notices and such. But since we're within the 120 days, this is the exact same thing that was done in January of this year regarding the Miller Valentine annexation petition, where a motion to renew was made by Alderperson Young and, at a subsequent meeting, and then the application was approved, or the annexation was approved.
Any further points of order, Alderperson Raome?
Not right now.
Okay. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, your request to renew the petition.
Thank you. I brought this issue back because I think it needed further review. The issue that we're looking at right here is item number seven, which is annexation request. And council members, I've, I've provided, thanks to Shane, city clerk, I've provided some documents here, which are maps of the area, actually, the maps of the city, of generalized existing and future map, or land use, as I was. These are straight out of the comprehensive plan, so if you take a look there, you'll see that in the current state, this tract of land is outside of the city as we recognize it. There's no disputing that fact. The future land use map, which is map 7-2, projects this particular tract of land should fall within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. So what I'm getting at here is that we need to reconsider what we were doing here. We need to look at this again. We need to get this piece of property within the city, whether it develops tomorrow, whether it develops 20 years down the line. The fact is, the comprehensive plan shows this piece of property within the city, and not to go too far and put words in their mouth, but other officials from other communities have recognized that this piece of property belongs within the city of Wisconsin Rapids city limits. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annexation request, just the annexation request. Any other discussion of anything else, I think we have it, that's fine, take place in item eight where it would belong, and right here, consider, strictly only consider, the annexation request. Thank you.
We have a motion by Alderperson Kirkpatrick and a second by Alderperson Worrell. Move into discussion. Alderperson Raome, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I do understand, I guess, that we're just going to talk about the annexation on this item. I, I guess by discussion, though, I guess, for why we're here, it'd be foolhardy to, I guess, to try to fool anybody of why this is back for annexation. I am going to speak against the annexation. I will speak against the items as we proceed because I do imagine we'll get past this item. Not with my vote. And so I'm not of total, in total agreement of how we got here this evening. I've listened to the city attorney. I do not necessarily totally agree. So I believe, along with many other people here this evening, they oppose the annexation, again, because of what they know is going to come after this item. And I guess, I'm not going to say a whole lot here on this part, but after we're done, or at some point through this, if somebody would want to speak against the annexation, I'd be willing to recognize them. But there is another speaker that we have here, so with that, I, that'll be it for right now, Your Honor.
Okay. So we're yielding time to somebody? Oh, oh, okay. Oh, okay. I didn't know that's what you were planning on doing. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion to approve the annexation request. Don't see anybody else wishing to speak. And we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Six As and two Nays.
Moving to item number eight, under unfinished business. These items were not acted upon at the August 19th council meeting because the items were contingent upon approval of the above annexation petition. Item A is item number eight from the August 4th Planning Commission Report Concerning Action on Plan 140464, Aspiris Clinics LLC. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning from R2-1 and 2 Family Residential District to B5 General Mixed Use District. Subject properties are located at the northeast corner of Chestnut Street and 20th Street South. Parcels number 0700313, 313A, 313, 312, excuse me, and the northwest corner of Oak Street and State Highway 54, parcels 3410874 and 3410876, which is item number six, attachment number six, I'm sorry, in your packets, council members here tonight. With that, I'd open it up for, entertain a motion or open it up for discussion. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. I kind of consider this one, my bringing this portion back as well, so I'll just say a couple of things here quick. You know, I've continued to receive correspondence, you know, from many individuals. I've continued to have conversations with many individuals, and I'm still of the firm convicted belief of what I talked about last month. You know, I've received direct correspondence. I've watched conversations take place on the Facebook Tribune's website. I've had emails for and against this, and like I said, I've had conversations with people for and against this. By far, I've had more people speak in favor of this than I have against it. I've had more people, I've watched more conversations take place from more individuals, saying that they were in favor of this. And so I have to believe that, that there's a consensus in the community that this is something that's desired, that community members want more options, more choices in their healthcare. One of the people that I spoke with was a former city alderman, and this was only a couple, maybe a week or so back. He said, "If this isn't approved, the city might as well hang a sign on the door that says 'closed for business.'" And we've been told that a vote against this project isn't a vote against business, but that's precisely what it is. It's a vote against an established business expanding in the area, and it's a clear signal to other outside businesses, as well as other businesses within the city, that are considering coming here or expanding, that we're not interested in them, that they should stay away, that they're going to get run through the wringer when they come here and talk to us about it. So I would, you know, I'm not going to go through everything that I said last time because I think it's, you know, still fresh in some people's minds. It's still out there. It's still available on video and audio. I would just encourage my fellow council members with an affirmative vote on this item. Thank you.
Further discussion or entertain a motion on the item here in front of us. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, again?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the item as presented.
A motion to approve, and approved by Kirkpatrick, and a second by Furkey. Alderperson Raome, you're next on the speaking list.
Yes, Your Honor, and I do have some things to say, but I'd like to recognize one of the gentlemen out in the audience there.
Good evening. My name is Michael Bovee. I reside at 1850 Metcalf Place in Wisconsin Rapids, just four blocks away from the property that we were speaking of. And I am the Chief Financial Officer at Riverview Hospital Association. You know, until recently, we thought this issue was already decided, and as a result, Salsperard, our president, sends his regrets, but he is unable to attend and is out of town. So you get me. I'd like to thank you for asking me to speak, Mr. Raome. And I would also like to thank all of our passionate employees and members of our community that continue to support Riverview Hospital Association. I want to reiterate that we all care deeply about this community. At the heart of every decision Riverview makes is patient care. For all the reasons discussed at the last Common Council meeting, we continue to feel confident in stating that having two hospitals in Wisconsin Rapids, a community our size, is simply not in the best interest of our community or the patients we serve. We appreciate the time that the council has already allowed us to speak to the issue, and rather than to reelaborate on all of our reasons, which are quite clear, they're spoken to quite eloquently by Mr. Salsperard and Mr. Metcalf, and out of respect for your time, we'd like to take this time to answer any questions you might have, or to be here to elaborate on any additional perspective that would be helpful in your decision making.
Alderpersons, any questions for Mr. Bovee? Alderperson Stack, please.
I just asked Mr. Dolan if he wanted to push a button for me like he did a month ago. The concern of two hospitals within one community of 17,000 people, where, where do you have situations such as this that are viable? Because I understand Aspiris's position, but still, we're speaking of a community of 17,000 people. And Aspiris gave me an example of one, and I did some research on it, and, you know, that, that community had two additional communities to either side of it, about 100,000 population either side. So within that geographical area, there was a large population to serve the two hospitals and be available. And I do not see why we need to have two here in Wisconsin Rapids. I, I think they will, one will feed off the other until one dies, and that is a big concern that I've had throughout this whole discussion. I, I just do not understand Aspiris's position. And in looking through their information, I noticed that on their website, as of August 2nd, 2013, they already had a hospital here, but they hadn't approached us at that point. So it appears that this has been something in the making by the Aspiris Board for a period of time. Again, I support the hospital, Riverview Hospital, in that there cannot be two viable entities in this town at this, at this time. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Stack, that is at the heart of our position as well. We've, we've done some research and looked at all of the hospitals in the state of Wisconsin, and until you get to populations in excess of 50,000, you do not find communities with more than one hospital, unless they are, as you spoke of, the example, immediately adjacent to larger metropolitan areas. And so it just begs the question, why do you think that is? And it's my personal conclusion, that's because it's not an economically viable solution, that you need a minimum number of patients to keep a hospital healthy, so that it can be there to serve the patients and keep them healthy. Now, if anyone has a different opinion on that, I'd be happy to hear it. I try to keep an open mind, but I just look at the, the rest of the state and throughout the country, and if you're hard pressed to find one example, and that example isn't really a good one, it seems like you should listen to that.
Other questions from Mr. Bovee? Mike, thank you for, oh, Alderperson, Furkey, please.
Good evening. I guess I was just wondering, at what point, if you're considering the level of the population dictating what makes a viable situation for two hospitals or, or one hospital, what would you come up with as far as a number? When you add in the Coussin, Port Edwards, the lakes, and even really Adams, Adams Friendship and surrounding areas, I think Riverview does serve already quite a large area.
I think your point is a really good one, and actually, that's something that we considered when we were analyzing it as well, in that when we compared all the other hospitals, as we listed out in, in detail and shared with, with members of the council, the phenomenon that you suggest that there's a larger area that the community hospital draws from is correct, but that same phenomenon would apply to every single one of those other communities and their hospitals as well. So we believe it is a good proxy for making that analogy.
So do you have a number?
The, the way we looked at it, and it's very simplistic, I will grant you, but it's around 50,000 for the community itself, not including the outside areas that it draws from as well.
Okay. So in reality, what you're asking this council to do is to vote against this annexation and changing the zoning. But in reality, isn't that granting Riverview Hospital a monopoly of hospital service in Wisconsin Rapids and the surrounding area?
I would leave that to the legal people to decide whether that's what that is or not.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Bovee? All right, seeing none, thanks, Mike, for addressing the body. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, were you next on the speaking list? I didn't, yeah. Right? Okay, please.
Thank you. And Todd, I, I want to thank you for those questions because I have that same stuff kind of written down here. And just to give you an idea, you, you did mention some of our surrounding communities, and not to belabor the point, but Wisconsin Rapids, 18,000 people, Grand Rapids, Beeren, Saratoga, Segal, Rudolph, Vesper, Arpin, Port Edwards, Nacousa, Rome, Adams Friendship, it's not 18,000 people, it's 46,000 in that micropolitan area, you know. So we're, we're not talking about 18,000 people in a glass cage. People move around. You know, I don't exactly have any, any questions for, for Riverview, but I believe that, you know, the, the proposal here is, is about an Aspiris project, and I believe that they have every right to, to speak to the requests that they've put forward. So if they'd be so good, I've got a couple of questions if they wouldn't mind trying to field those.
Please. Introduce yourselves, please, as well.
Tom Velker, President of Aspiris Doctors Clinic, and I live at 6220 Ashbury Drive.
I'm Dean Danner. I'm the President of Aspiris Clinics, and my address is 5101 Blazing Star in Rip Mountain.
Thank you. First, we've, it's, it's, these are kind of questions that have pervaded the, the discussion in the past here, in this chamber, also out in the community, online, on Facebook, and just in general. So I'd like to try to kind of clear the air here if we can, and kind of get to the, to the heart of some of these matters. The, the first one, the one that always sticks in my mind, is this, this phrase, duplication of services. What services would Aspiris duplicate and why? And also, with the Doctors Clinic moving off of the Riverview campus, has Riverview duplicated any services that the Doctors Clinic provides?
Well, first of all, anytime you have a hospital of any size, there are just certain basic services that you need to have. So yes, we've said all along that there would be duplication of basic services. So there will be, you know, some of the same ancillary services that we already have in the clinic, but we also will have, you know, basic services like surgery, OBE, those sorts of things. As far as new services, or I'm sorry, services that are duplicated by Riverview, in our view, they've duplicated our OB program. We had OBs here before. They brought in OBs to compete with our OBs. They've also, in our view, duplicated the Doctors Clinic. The Doctors Clinic has been here for 50 years, and they chose to develop their own physician group to compete with the Doctors Clinic. So I think competition and duplication are a fact of life. And I can give you other examples, your orthopedic group here in town left the hospital building an ambulatory surgery center. That was a duplication of service. So, duplication of service is not, first of all, is not uncommon. And secondly, in the old healthcare delivery model, there was some thought that duplication of service does drive up healthcare costs, because utilization goes up. In some instances, that's true, but recent studies are showing different results. We gave you an example of that in the Milwaukee area. But more importantly than that is, as the healthcare delivery model changes, and healthcare providers are now at risk for the cost of care, duplication of service becomes a non-issue, because if we order too many MRIs or too many whatevers, that cost is being borne by the healthcare provider, not by the patient, not by the payer. So, the argument of duplication of service, in our view, is irrelevant to the discussion. As far as services that are going to be new, as we indicated, we're looking at a whole variety of cardiac services, including pacemaker clinics, including additional imaging services. We're looking at cardiac catheterization, that was a question mark. We're looking at bringing a number of services into the community that are currently leaving. And just to respond to Mr. Bovee's comment about the size of a community, I don't think the size of a community is as important as the market share in that community. And almost 80% of your healthcare spend leaves this market. It goes to either Marshfield, Wausau, or Stevens Point. And our point is, the large percentage of that business going to Marshfield can be brought back here, we can provide more services here. Yes, Aspiris would like to have those tertiary referrals when it's appropriate to leave the community, but we believe a lot more can be done in this community. So, the population, as far as we're concerned, is really not the significant question here. And in addition to that, we believe that we can draw patients from the Plover area. So, there's a bigger population here than the 46,000 you're talking about, so. Thank you.
I have a couple more questions here also, and one you already hit on. I kind of wanted to know if you'd had, you know, we're going to mention any of the services that weren't currently offered that you were planning on, but I think you hit on that. I had also had someone say to me that it was the city's responsibility to foster discussion about coordinated patient care between Aspiris and Riverview. And I was just curious if your organizations had tried to work together to do that, before you got to this point.
Yes, we've actually had discussions with Riverview off and on over the years. We're always talking to them to try to work on different projects. And in fact, next week, we have a previously scheduled joint hospitalist oversight committee meeting. So, there are things we're collaborating on all the time. We have talked about collaboration on this particular issue, and have just not seen eye to eye with, you know, the future of healthcare and with what is needed.
Thank you. And I guess kind of the last question I got is, you know, last month, we had individuals present before us that went on and on and on about what they do for the community outside of medical services provided. And I was just curious about what Aspiris and the Doctors Clinic have done, do, and, you know, intend to do in the future going forward, whatever any outcome would be regarding community support.
You may have noticed, when Riverview does things, often they're getting their name in the paper. They put out lots of ads and are touting that. That's neither good nor bad. Riverview has certainly been a good neighbor in that regard. Aspiris tends not to do that. We've been donating to the community, but we don't ask for recognition when we do that. We have given, now I think about 220,000 direct contributions to the community. And just for your information, every remote hospital that Aspiris has acquired has had a hospital foundation as part of that program. And we certainly intend to with this facility, so that there will be more donations that'll be coming back to be used for the indirect healthcare, not for Aspiris, but to provide services that will help promote the health of the community. I'd like to add, if you look at that Aspiris acquired the Doctors Clinic nine years ago, and we went back to look at how much investment we've made in this community in that time period, it's almost $80 million over the last nine years. So, we've invested in facilities, we've invested in employees. The Doctors Clinic has grown significantly with the business that we have generated, it's created jobs in the community. As Tom said, we do make donations, we will have a foundation. One point that keeps getting missed is, we've heard from others saying, well, what about the cancer program? It's a great program. We agree, it is a great program. Guess who helped bring that to the community? Aspiris. Aspiris did it with the UW. We put $1.5 million into that program, so we provided seed money for that project. So, Aspiris does care about this community. We believe we are part of the community, and we want things in the best interest of the community. So, I do think that, you know, while, yeah, there's a vibrant foundation here, and we've supported that, the Doctors Clinic has supported it. We will continue to support the community going into the future, and even more so as we continue to grow and develop our services in this market.
That's all I have, thank you, gentlemen.
While you're at the podium, any other council members that have questions for either the gentleman? All the person Stack, please.
To Dr. Velker, Mr. Danner, when the Doctors Clinic moved off of the hospital campus, and you said in turn that they duplicated your service, what were they to have done with that space that they had lost to your clinic? They had a facility whereby a doctor needed something done, so they would send them over to the hospital for imaging, perhaps, or some type of lab work. So, now, you decide that... You decided that you would build your own clinic, and so now, the hospital didn't have doctors. Would that be correct?
The hospital had exactly as many doctors after the fact as they did before. So, any care that was needed was still being able to be provided, exactly like it was. Mr. Danner brought up the obstetric service. Just prior to Riverview starting that service, we had talked about perhaps recruiting another obstetrician, but came to the conclusion that this town only needed about 2.8 obstetricians to serve the full obstetric needs. And we had three at the time, so we decided, no, we're not going to recruit anymore. And Riverview brought in three more. Now, did they bring them in just to fill a building that is now empty? Or did they bring them in to compete with our obstetrics program? I'll allow you to, you know, make that determination. But I don't think you can say that they were filling a desperate need in the community, or that that empty building was begging that somebody be up there to take care of patients that could not be taken care of elsewhere.
I'd like to make a point, too, that Aspiris Doctors Clinic never wanted to leave that campus. Originally, we worked with Riverview to try to work out a solution to our space needs. We had physicians that were residing, three physicians to an office, trying to do their work. And so, we had several conversations about how we could do something on that campus. Those conversations were not fruitful, and as a result, we ended up leaving the campus, but that was not our first choice.
Thank you.
Any other further questions for these two gentlemen? Anything further you'd like to add while you're at the podium? Okay. All right, thank you for...
No, just thank you for the opportunity. And, you know, I guess our bottom line is that this is a decision of, do you want growth and opportunity, or do you want to maintain the status quo?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning, change in zoning, I should say, from R2. We've got... Dr. Kersling, yes, sir. All the person... One of the two gentlemen, please. Make sure you just hit the push button, so you got a green light, and then you're good to go. Nope. One more time.
All right.
There we go, we can hear you, thank you.
I was not expecting to do this, but I thank you distinguished city council members and mayor. I felt that I needed to respond particularly with the comment made by Aspiris regarding the Cancer Center. For those of you that don't know me, I am the Medical Oncologist and Medical Director at the Cancer Center here in Wisconsin Rapids. I grew up in this community, I graduated from Assumption High School. I never, ever thought I would return to this city. But I did return to this city, because when I was approached, I was absolutely blown away by the community spirit that was behind the Cancer Center, and the effort that had been made on the part of the community for that Cancer Center. You know, a comment was made last month, that, incidentally, was an inaccurate comment, that Riverview Hospital is a family-owned profit hospital. And I thought about that, and the interesting thing about that is, I think that the greatest time we've had in Wisconsin Rapids is actually when we had family-owned industry here. And I think about the paper mills, and I think about how important they were, because they were in the community, and they cared solely about the community. And I would argue with you that Riverview Hospital is the same kind of foundational community facility, and should be looked at that way. Now, I'm very happy that some of the city council members have gotten input from the community. I was a little bit disheartened when I had sent an email, and it wasn't read. But I want to give you my perspective as to what is going to happen to cancer care in this community. And understand that I, at one time, was employed by Aspiris. I have a very good working relationship with Dr. Velker, with all of the physicians there, I consider them excellent. We collaborate on patients. But let me tell you what I think is going to happen, unfortunately. No one has denied, no matter what you're talking about in terms of bringing some new services to this community, that there's going to be a duplication of basic services. Nobody has denied that. But what that's going to mean is that that is going to affect Riverview Hospital's bottom line. And as much as we want to make this a business, there are tremendous complexities to healthcare business. And what's going to happen with that is that if that cannot be recovered, 55% of the monies is for employment. And so, Riverview Hospital will have a bottom line, it will be a smaller bottom line, and there will be less employees. Now, right now, in the Cancer Center, we have 25 employees. And even Aspiris indicates that they respect the services that we provide to this community. They've indicated that they're going to bring an outreach medical oncologist here, obviously, as part of the competition. But understand now, in the Cancer Center, we have 25 employees that are serving those people. When Riverview Hospital cuts back, they're going to cut back in the Cancer Center. It's not going to be isolated. And pretty soon, we're going to have 17 employees, and then we're going to have 12 employees, and then we're going to have eight employees. And then, we're going to be an outreach site, which is the only other type of cancer service that has ever been in Wisconsin Rapids. Having seen how this community has supported the Cancer Center, the amount of monies that have been given to the Patient Cancer Fund, the continued dedication with the rebuild of the Cancer Center, I just simply, for the sake of the community, am saddened by the fact that I cannot see any other solution to this if we move forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members... All the person Stack, please.
Regarding...
If all the person Stack would like to yield this time, or another all the person would like to yield their time after Mr. Stack speaks, if he does not want to.
He may have after I speak.
Okay.
All right.
After he speaks, he said, thanks.
Just a note, to Dr. Kersling and the others that have contacted me, I've read every email, listened to every call, and both for and against it. I appreciated that effort that was put forth. I did reach out to Mr. Danner for some questions, and Mr. Patrick gave me some answers as well. So, I have been looking to do this as a well-rounded, in a well-rounded manner, to gauge what would be appropriate for this community, and I yield time to Mr. Danner.
Thank you, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to point out, if you look at the white paper that we wrote and the information we provided, we've never said we're bringing medical oncology to this community. So, that's on the record. We have not, that discussion hasn't even been had, so the statement that we are doing that is inaccurate. So, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. All the person... Will you finish? All the person Stack has finished, all the person Rayom? Go ahead, please, all the person Rayom. Turn on your microphone, please, so we can hear you.
Did you want to respond to that?
I only want to respond to that as an introduction, that we have Aspiris and its company, and it's having to indicate that the radiation oncology spectrum, that they would not be bringing a radiation oncologist or building a radiation or putting onto their campus a radiation machine, but they were having an outreach physician, and they named the physician. So, that's all I can say as my response.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All the person Rayom, you're ready to hit your button, I'm assuming you want to speak, please.
Thank you, be quick. I hope everybody up here that's going to vote has listened to both sides. There have been many contacts by people, I think probably to all of us. I'm not going to, I guess, say the numbers, but we would be remiss to say that by far the majority that I received were against this taking place. Now, some could say, well, they knew where I was coming from to start with. And also, they could say, when they talk favorably to somebody, they know who to talk to, too. So, that being said, again, I encourage the people to take into consideration what we've heard from people in the community, what we've heard from the gentlemen here that have made comments, I think have lent insight into our decision-making. And I stand with what my vote was a month ago. And with that, Your Honor, I would encourage the council members to think what has been talked about. With that, Your Honor, that's, I guess, it on this.
All the person Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a note, too, for folks who may be at home and those here, it's never, as a council member, it's never been my intention in any way to, in some way, not be a welcoming community to those who wanted to establish a business here, with what I thought were fair reasons, okay? That's the best I can come up with at this moment. But earlier this year, in January, we had a request from the, I believe it was called the Valentine Group, and we approved that, it was to be housing, they've not been able to do what they wanted to do. Recently, well, it's even seven years ago, Jamie Mansell came to the council, and they asked us if we could help them with a fiber wind energy project, the making of fiberglass blades for green energy. Again, this council, we said, go for it, we'll help you as we can. We provide a lot of assistance in infrastructure in the East Side Business Park. We loaned them some money. When there's a new cranberry company out on Washington, Mariucci, okay? We welcome them. This idea that this council has tried to impede progress or business in willy-nilly manner, so to speak, has not been one of my goals or my concerns, that what we do will enhance the community and not necessarily lead to a failure in something else. And just as a quick example, Subway has four, I believe it's four businesses in town, they found a way to do that. But you only find one McDonald's, you don't find a second McDonald's. Thank you. Thank you.
All the person, Ferkey, you're next on the list.
This is not Riverview or Aspiris. Both can survive. Both can succeed. I, this mayor, this council, was elected to bring businesses into the city, to promote the current businesses, to expand, and to promote new businesses to come into the town. They both can survive. Riverview will have an impact with Aspiris coming, if that, in fact, is what happens. But that doesn't mean they both can't succeed. Riverview will look for new ways to provide revenue streams with their cancer care, with this YMCA development. There's a lot of things that Riverview can do, that Aspiris can do, that Marshfield Hospital does. You know, you both need to get out of your comfort zone and look for different things to promote yourselves. Competition is a good thing. It's a good thing in a lot of different aspects, not only in healthcare, but in automotive care, you know? Everything, restaurants, everything. Competition is good. And Riverview will be better for it, and Aspiris will be better for it. I truly, truly believe that. Thank you.
All the person, you're next on the speaking list.
I just want to thank everybody that has contacted me. This last month has been quite a barrage of emails and texts and phone calls, a lot more than the previous vote. I'll say that for sure. And a lot of people commented on that. And with that, I'd give my, some time to Freddie. He wants to speak, so.
Sir, please come to the podium and introduce yourself. Make sure the microphone is on by hitting the push button at the base of the microphone.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. My name is Frederick Pruss. I reside at 2750 Chestnut Street here in Wisconsin Rapids. I was born and raised in Wisconsin Rapids and have called this my home for the 36 years I've been on this earth. Unfortunately, for 13 years of the 36, I've had to take jobs away from my home city because there was lack of work here. Even with the layoffs from the mill and other businesses closing in the area, I still decided to buy my home, raise my family here in Wisconsin Rapids. While most of my friends and acquaintances that have left the area for work in other communities around the U.S., and watching businesses close their doors, in 2012, I decided to buy my own business here in Wisconsin Rapids, where I raise my family. The paper mill employed a majority of the jobs to this community up until the change of hands in 2000. Since then, there has been many layoffs. The employees' parking lots that were once full 24/7 now stand vacant. Even though the employees, they still employ many citizens, this industry is no longer the staple of this community that it once was. Over the years, many businesses coming before this council have been turned away, thus turning away job opportunities, not only for Wisconsin Rapids citizens, but the surrounding communities. Grand Rapids, Saratoga, Nacusa, Grant, Plover, Bearden, Pittsville, et cetera. I personally, and I know I speak for most of my generation that still live in the area, want to see this area flourish with industry opportunity and population, and not more assisted living and retirement facilities. The number of these facilities reflects on the aging population of our community, which shows that healthcare is very important in this area. In your last meeting about the Aspires addition, we were informed of the possibility of taking business away from the Riverview Association, as well as the impact upon the community. Why were these concerns not brought up with all the drugstores, auto parts stores, grocery stores, department stores, bars, restaurants, et cetera, that our community currently has? Because it is free enterprise. It makes business work better and harder to get repeat business and competitive prices. Free enterprise, freedom of private business to organize and operate for profit in a competitive system without interference by government beyond regulation necessary to protect public interest and keep the national economy in balance. I believe the Aspires project will be an excellent addition to our healthcare options in the area. With the network of hospitals associated with Aspires and the specialists that they bring to the table, why would we not want this facility in our community? Let's throw the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids that you support the growth, want more jobs here, by starting with allowing this already established business to grow more in our community. Looking forward, I hope that you, as a council, will put more consideration into the businesses that have interest in our community, so we can stay on the map instead of diminishing from it.
I don't see any other all the persons requesting to speak. Shane's going to see if he, there, okay. There are no other persons wishing to speak. Someone from the audience does wish to speak. Does somebody want to? All the person, Ray, please. Please make sure the microphone is on. Introduce yourself and your address.
My name is Carissa Lager. I live at 2111 Saratoga Street in Wisconsin Rapids. Our property is within the area that you guys are talking about rezoning. At first, I wanted to speak as a property owner. One of the concerns that I have heard over the last month, and I have heard brought up multiple times here, is the fact that we've heard for years how irresponsible, irresponsible our past city government has been. It was about keeping other good-paying jobs out because it did not fit someone's agenda. We are making decisions in the past based on painted rainbows and the whims here and there of certain people. What we need to make a decision for, or we're hoping our city government will make a decision based on valid facts, not painted rainbows, not promises of this or that, not hopes that this revenue is going to come in, not hopes these doctors are going to build homes in the city of Wisconsin Rapids to increase your property tax base. Realistically, look at the locations, look at what they're telling you. Please be a responsible city government. Be responsible. At one of the first meetings, it was brought up, why don't they have somebody, a consulting firm? Look at what this size community actually can support. Not, we may do this service, but we may not. We're not really going to tell you. We don't want painted rainbows about how pretty it's going to be, how great the community is going to be. 10 years down the road, there's a very good chance you are going to be looking at a completely different outcome. If you do not look at the facts and the dollars and the numbers and the multiple jobs you are going to affect one way or another, if you don't look at them now and truly consider all of it now with facts, not the painted rainbows. I doctor at Aspiris. I utilize Riverview Hospital. This is about the community. My property isn't a valid thing anymore because, obviously, we're not respected as property owners that we pay our taxes. That's been obvious here over the course of many years. But look at what is good down the road with facts. Please do not just look at the painted rainbows and hope that it's going to work out in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All the persons, anyone else wishing to discuss? All the person, Ray, did you have something to say as well?
I wasn't going to, but I just, I do feel that it goes along with what the discussion is about. And, you know, when I keep hearing the ones who want to keep or chase business away, that there are those people that want to do it, the people that are talking negative are the ones who keep bringing that up. I think there are council members that do take a good look at what fits for the community and what doesn't. So, sometimes I think that those people that are throwing the dart sort of step back and take a look at things in a better, a different way. Jim made an excellent point that promoting the city and things that he has talked about over the years and decisions and what we've had to make. One thing that has gotten me, not just with this issue, but about people leaving the community. I grew up here, lived my entire life here. I went to school here. You can go back when times were booming. People left. The kids left after high school. They went to college. Some came back. The vast majority went and spread their wings and went to do something else. Some, as the opportunity arose and it triggered something in them, decided, yeah, I'll make the move and come back. It may have been when they're 40 years old. It may have been when they're 55 years old. But people have left this community from day one. So, don't say by a vote against this is against the community, is turning away, that we are elected to make the decisions, and sometimes they are dang tough. Sometimes we've got to make a decision against somebody or opposing somebody that may live with us, next door to us, work with us. But the tough decision has to be made. And he only made the comment about how many people had called me because it had been made earlier. Sometimes, we have to use our own mind, because our mind, I believe, is the one that has to make the decision. It's not the 100 people or whatever that may have called us they have lent input into. The people that have commented tonight have lent, have given us input. But in the end, it's our minds, it's the eight of us, that push the button. We make the decision. That's what we're elected to do. Sometimes they are unpopular with people. A lot of times, I guess, if we go against something, it's unpopular with people. The vast majority of the time, we agree on everything, maybe not entirely, but we pass things for the most part. There are times, this is one, that we, some of us disagree. But we can weigh the comments that we've had, the input that we got, use our own mind, and also listen to what I said before, people have left. Those that say the community is dying, take a look back, turn that finger around. Maybe, maybe to some degree, it's the ones that keep talking negative. To turn, to reject something doesn't mean that you're turning away or being negative about it, about the community. It's what you look at is the better fit. And in this case, I don't think that going along with this, that this makes it a better fit. I just don't see how this will sustain itself, the two of them, over the long term. So, and we have brought businesses in, as Jim has said. So, with that, Your Honor.
Are there any further requests to speak? I've got a hand in the back. Somebody want to recognize this lady? All the person, Ferkey, please, ma'am, you can come to the podium.
Okay, I don't have a prepared statement, but in my mind...
If you could introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shirley Zella, and I live at 401 Pepper Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have a statement, but I really have a couple of questions that, in my mind, really, if I'd have clarification on them, it's, you know, how I'm looking at this thing. And I'll admit, they're probably a little naive and simplistic, but they'd help me in looking at this situation. The first is, I understand that usually before a business goes ahead, they do feasibility studies, and the people that have said that, you know, this can't work have been, appear to have been against it. But there are people evident, you know, from Aspiris who would have to forward the money, and their money is on the line, and I would think that they have researched this to see if it would work. I mean, you don't go ahead with these kind of developments with no, you know, without having looked into it. So, I'd like to know about that. And then, the other thing is, from what I've read in the local newspaper, it's my understanding that if we, if this facility will not exist in the Wisconsin Rapids area, it'll just kick in an alternative plan where it will exist in the Bearden area. So, won't all the pros and cons of having this facility happen here? But are we deciding whether the facility will be here or not, or whether it will be here or in Bearden? And it seems to me that if it is in Bearden, it puts a little bit of a hardship on, you know, doctors who have to travel back and forth, back and forth, the clinic, the Bearden clinic, the Bearden. So, if anybody could clarify those for me.
I had opened up the requestor, if there's somebody from the requestor that'd like to address those concerns. Thank you for the questions. Please.
First, the question about the feasibility study. Aspiris has done a high-level review of the market here. As we've indicated before, there's about 78% of the healthcare spend in this community does leave, and a large percentage of that is going to Marshfield Ministry. And when you drill down into the data, it shows that a significant amount of that, probably, you know, numbers anywhere from 50 to 75 million of that healthcare spend could be brought back into this community. Now, will all of it come back? No. Some people have a preference for Marshfield, and we understand that. It's a good organization, too. But there's a lot of doctors, clinic, patients that end up going there. And so, we believe just from those numbers that we can make the hospital go, the expansion of the clinic and the hospital go. There's been a lot of talk about what this will do to Riverview, and I understand that, yes, there will probably be some impact, but I think whoever said it, said it well, that if Riverview and Aspiris do the right things, we can both be successful. But the bottom line is, we're not trying to take business from Riverview. We're trying to bring business back from a competing organization, which is Ministry Marshfield. So, that's the first thing. And I'm losing, and the second point, oh, the Bearden question. There's, yes, we have, we do have a second option. And as we said at the last meeting, the question came up about Bearden, and then I think there was a comment, well, we're using that as a threat. And that wasn't the intent. We are not threatening anything. We're trying to do what we think is best for the patients of Wisconsin Rapids, what's best for Aspiris, and best for the providers that work for Aspiris and the employees that work in this community. And so, if this doesn't go forward, yeah, we have other options to look at, and we want to do the right thing for the community. So, it's not a threat. We're just, yes, there's options that we have to look at, and that would be one of them.
Thank you for addressing the concerns. The question before this body yet this evening is requests and change in zoning. It's a quasi-judicial question, and I think I would entertain, it looks like all the person, Kirkpatrick, would like to question, that is it a question regarding the rezoning? All the person, Kirkpatrick, Mr. Stack, you'd be second, Jim, after Andrew speaks. Okay. Andrew, please.
It is not. I guess, what is...
I'm just addressing the fact that the question before the body is whether or not the change in zoning. You've got a motion and a second on the floor to approve the change in zoning, so I just wanted to know if you had a question regarding the change in zoning.
I do not. I was looking to call a question.
You can, so do so.
Motion to call a question.
We have a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to call the question. In that case, we will move into a voice vote. We will need two-thirds majority to call the question, in which we would, all the person, we're all, I'm sorry, all the person, Kirkpatrick, and all the person, we're all. We would need two-thirds. It's really a motion to cease debate is really the formal motion. I would assume that's what you're trying to do. Okay. All in favor, segment by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have, Shane heard six up here, so I'm going to go with six, two, I'm going to go with Shane's, Shane. So, the motion to cease debate has passed, so in that case, we move to the original motion on the floor, which was a motion to approve... to the original motion on the floor, which was a motion to approve the request and change in zoning from R2 district to B2 district, the subject properties, we're all well aware of what those subject properties are, we'll not read that again. So, in that, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six a's and two n's.
Item 8B under unfinished business, item number nine from the August 4th Planning Commission report concerning action on Plan 140465 Aspiris Clinics. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow personal and professional services within the B5 general mixed-use district. The subject properties are located at the northeast corner of Chestnut Street and 20th Street South, and the northwest corner of Oak Street and State Highway 54, which is also attachment number six in your packets. Alderperson Kirkpatrick?
Thank you, I move for approval of item 8B as presented.
We have a motion by Alderperson Kirkpatrick, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Furkey?
I hit your button.
If you can hit your remote, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the request of conditional use to allow personal professional services, move into discussion, Alderperson Kirkpatrick?
I had not pressed my button.
Oh, okay.
Let's carry over then.
Any discussion? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six a's and two n's.
Thank you, thank you all for being here on that item, we have other business to take care of, so if you are leaving, I encourage you to do so quietly and respectfully, so the council may continue to carry out its business. Item number nine, reports of the Planning Commission meeting held August 18th. Again, I had asked you to leave quietly, please carry your conversation out into the hallway, thank you. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on Monday, August 18th, 2014, in the first-floor conference room of City Hall, all members were present, except for Dave Laspa, also attending were Adam Teagan and Alderperson Rayom, and a list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item 1A was a Bogart Living Trust CSM, the applicant was requesting a two-lot CSM and dedication of public right-of-way for property located on the southwest corner of 8th Street South and Grove Avenue. Staff comments, including the requirements to dedicate three feet of right-of-way on Grove Avenue and five feet of right-of-way on 8th Street South. In addition, an easement was added for the existing freestanding sign located on the northeast corner of proposed lot number one. Speaking in favor of the request for three individuals, there was a motion by Aaron, a second by Rose Kranz, to approve the Bogart Living Trust CSM, and that motion carried. There were no other maps or plots received. Item two was a motion to adjourn by Furkey and a second by Rose Kranz, and the committee adjourned. With that, I entertain a motion on the Planning Commission report. Item nine, I guess it doesn't have a, oh, I'm sorry, Anne, I'm sorry, there's a second report. We'll do them together. The Planning Commission met at 5:00 PM on Monday, September 8th, 2014, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall, all members were present, and a list of others is present on, others present is on file in the clerk's office. There was approval of the reports from the previous months, minutes, and that motion carried. Item two was a map and plat, Scott Gray CSM, in which the applicant was requesting a two-lot certified survey map and the dedication of public right-of-way for property located at 2341 6th Street South. Scott Gray, John Lee, and Dave Jostin, representing J&amp;L Home Rental LLC, were also present for the item. The CSM will create two lots from one lot, in which one will remain, lot number one will remain R2, and will have a street frontage of 66 foot less than the minimum, frontage requirement of 75 feet. A variance has been requested for this lot and will be taken up at the September 9th, and was taken up at the zoning appeals meeting. Lot number two is requested to be rezoned to B2, which does not have a minimum frontage requirement. A three-foot strip will be dedicated from Lot 2 for street purposes on 7th Street South. There was a motion and a second to approve the request contingent on approval of the variance for Lot 1 by the zoning board of appeals, and approval of a rezoning to B2 for Lot number 2. There are no other maps or plots received. There was a public hearing on that plan, no one spoke in favor or against. Item number four was action, Scott Gray, John Lee, and Dave Jostin also were present for that item, in which J&amp;L Home Rentals LLC is requesting a rezoning from R2 to B2 for the easterly half of the property located at 2341 6th Street South within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Find my spot here. Based on the review for the request, staff did recommend approval, there was a motion and a second to recommend approval of the rezoning from R2 to B2 for the easterly half of the 2341 6th Street South, and that motion carried. Item five was a life estate of Sherilyn Slinger and T. Carlson, it was an annexation request. That annexation request, city clerk had requested the annexation request be held over due to required documents having just been sent to the state for review. There was a motion and a second to table the item until the October meeting, and that motion carried. Item six was a motion to adjourn, and that motion was seconded and was carried. So with that, we will now move on to item number nine, the two reports, August 18th and September 8th, the Planning Commission. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that report, those reports? I entertain a motion. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Motion to accept the reports, place them on file.
Motion and a second, motion by Kirkpatrick and a second by Kellogg. Move into discussion, anyone wishing to speak on the report? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Item number 10, under new business, item A is an election of a Waterworks and Lighting Commission member. Defer to the city clerk on this item, how many letters of intent did we get?
We received one letter of interest from Joel Kazicki.
In that case, we have a motion to nominate, nomination for Joel Kazicki from Alderperson Rayom, and a second by Alderperson Kellogg. And I guess I'd entertain a motion to cast unanimous ballot. Is there a second? Second by Furkey, if you wouldn't mind hitting the button, Todd. Thank you. We have a motion, a second to cast unanimous ballot, all in favor? I guess you can do a, either however Shane wants to do that item, voice or not.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
See you're here, Joe, thanks again for your interest to serve, and look forward to working with you on the commission for your next term. Item 10B, a resolution exempting the city of Wisconsin Rapids from the county library tax, see attachments number seven and eight. Council members, what are your wishes? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. New members might not recognize this as such, but this is something that we take up on an annual basis. Make a motion to approve resolution and the attached statute.
We have a motion by Kirkpatrick and a second by Kellogg, any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Item number 10, under new business, item C is a resolution adopting the Wood County All Hazards Mitigation Plan, see attachment number nine, and a copy of the draft is on file in the clerk's office. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item? We have a motion by Kellogg to accept, is there a second? Alderperson Dolan, you've got a second, any discussion?
I'm trying to.
Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What is adopting this All Hazards Mitigation Plan mean to the community? Maybe the chief or the other chief?
We'll defer to the fire chief, who's, I understand, well-versed in what's all in there.
I'll start, and then if Kurt wants to add anything after that, but this is more or less, it's the county emergency action plan. Also, within our own community, Kurt and I are right now in the process of rewriting the city's plan. Our plan before was very heavily related towards flooding, we're trying to make it an all-accomplishing plan, so Kurt, you want anything?
And what would be those items? Okay, you said flooding, now what are you adding to it?
Really, it'd be dealing with any major incidents, any major event. So it could be something from a large planning scale event, like our Fourth of July, it could be weather-related, it could be some type of domestic terrorism, it could be an active shooter, any type of large-scale event.
Okay. And what is, well, you said you're working on what the mitigation plan is, is that correct? Or the mitigation plan is in effect, or will be after this council action?
What's in front of you tonight is the adoption of the counties, and our signing on saying, we're good with that. What David had shared is he and I are working on updating and really enhancing and broadening our city plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Actually, the Mr. Stack's questions and the chief's responses, that's right where I'm at.
All right.
Thank you.
Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Item number 11, standing council committee reports, item A, Finance and Property Committee meeting held September 9th.
I just asked Mr. Dolan if he'd like to do it again. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 9th, 2014, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall, all members were present, also attending were Dave Batten, Tim DeSorcy, Jim Brown, Randy Balko, Krista Coon, and Alderpersons Kirkpatrick and Furkey. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, there was no, there were no special beer license applications. Item three, a special events application filed by the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for the annual Rekindle the Spirit Parade and Lighting Ceremony on November 26th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, which includes closing Grand Avenue from the Rapids Mall to 4th Street and 2nd Street between Oak and East for parade route. Nothing has changed from last year's parade. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan to approve the application, motion carried. A special events application filed by Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for the Heart of Wisconsin Fall Carnival. Setup would be on Wednesday, September 24th, and Thursday, September 25th. Carnival would operate Friday, September 26th, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Saturday, September 27th, from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, September 28th, from noon to 5:00 PM, and would include vending. The petitioners did request some time changes. The carnival now would operate Friday, September 26th, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Saturday, September 27th, from 11:00 AM to 10:30 PM, and Sunday, September 28th, from noon to 5:00 PM. Chief Hoyer has no problems extending the times. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan to approve the application with the time amendments made, motion carried. Review and consider approval of the 2015 Mass Transit Operating Capital Grant Application and Budget Request. This was presented to the committee by Mr. Batten, Dave Batten. A request, it was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan to approve the application and budget request, motion carried. A request from Police Chief Hoyer for additional LTE hours for the Dale Meister cold case homicide trial in October 2014, a two-week jury trial is anticipated. The chief is requesting an additional 120 hours at a cost of $3,890.90 for the three officers who had previously worked on it. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Whirl to approve the request, motion carried. A request to obtain bids for the east side assessment plat 59 for the area bounded by the west right-of-way of 12 Streets North to the north right-of-way of Franklin Street, to the east right-of-way of 14th Street North, to the north right-of-way of Washington Street, to the east right-of-way of 15th Street North, and to the south right-of-way of Baker Street. Estimated cost for this is $19,096, there is $22,000 in the budget at this time. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Dolan to approve the request to obtain bids, motion carried. Review bids received for the 2014 Mead Rapids View Park railing contract and the 2014 Mead Rapids View Park Cable Railing Contract. Discuss and approve what type of railing is desired for the project. Award contract to lowest qualified responsible bidder for the type of railing is selected. Eagle Construction was the low bid for both types of railings. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack to table this item, motion carried with Whirl abstaining. Request from Dave Laspa, city engineer, for approval of additional funding for the replacement of the storm sewer under the CN Railroad as part of the water main repair contract on 17th Avenue and Carey Street. An additional $95,538 is requested for 170 feet of half-inch steel piping. The money would come from the Stormwater Utility Funds. It was moved by Whirl, seconded by Stack to approve the request, motion carried. Beverage operator licenses applications, it was moved by Stack, seconded by Whirl to approve those listed. Item 10B, it was moved by Stack, seconded by Whirl to renew licenses for those listed. Item 10C, it was moved by Stack, seconded by Whirl to deny license applications for two persons, as recommended by the police chief, motion carried. The clerk is instructed to notify the, these applicants of the appeal process. Audit of the bills, the committee audited the bills, voucher 563578 of August 1st, 2014, through voucher 56681 of August 31st, 2014, and recommends payment. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Whirl to adjourn, motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of these minutes.
We have a motion from Stack, Alderperson Stack, is there a second? We have a motion to approve and a second by Alderperson Kellogg, Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
Just, I guess, a question on number eight. Did we see, did we see that weren't at the meeting, what the, what came in for bids on that, on the railings? Did we get a copy, I mean?
City engineer has.
Maybe I misplaced it, I'm not sure.
I, yeah, we had them at the Public Works Committee, but I didn't distribute them at the Finance Committee meeting. Did you need the amount of the low bid?
It just, I thought I saw them, but I didn't, and maybe that's where they were, and I didn't pull it out.
Were you just looking for the low qualified, or were you looking at?
Well, it's got the low, the low bid there, and I guess the other question from finance is, it was tabled.
Right, and since we tabled it, that was as far as we went on that item that time.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll be coming back to look at it again.
Any other discussion? Seeing no further requests to speak, move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight a's and zero n's.
Next item is Public Works Committee meeting held September 2nd, Alderperson Rayom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, in the City Hall Council Chambers, all members were present, a list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, review and recommend the award to the low-qualified bidder of the 17th Avenue South Boring and Jacking Contract. Two bids received, the low-qualified bid was received from Castner Trucking and Excavating in the amount of $309,750. There was a motion, a second, to award the contract to the low-qualified bidder, Castner Trucking and Excavating in the amount of $309,750, the motion carried. Item three, review and recommend the award to the low-qualified bidder of the Safe Routes to School Sidewalk and Crossing Improvements, a federal-funded project, Wisconsin DOT ID One bid was received, which was approximately $96,000 over the engineer's cost estimate. The Wisconsin DOT is reviewing the bid, there's a motion, a second, to reject all bids contingent upon authorization from the Wisconsin DOT, the motion carried. Item four is a request from Steve Klavine of SK Construction to rename Klavine Avenue from the West Cul-de-sac to 15th Place South to Klavine Court. A motion and a second to approve the request, and the motion carried. Item five, a request to study the vehicle queuing on West Grand Avenue slash West Riverview View Expressway and Chase Street slash West River View Expressway due to the increase in long-unit trains going through the city. There was a motion, a second, to approve the study and to instruct city staff to follow-up with the CN Railroad and the Interstate Commerce Commission regarding this issue. That motion carried. Item six was to review the proposed 2014 Public Works Project Schedule. Committee reviewed the schedule. Item seven was to review the referral list. The committee reviewed the list. Items 14 and 15 of 2014 may be removed. Item eight was, there was a motion to adjourn, and a second to adjourn, and the motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:34 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
I have a motion by Raume and a second by Alderperson Kirkpatrick. I'm going to use my request to speak button to see how that works. So I have a question regarding number, sorry. This would be related to the Safe Routes to School, the award to the low-qualified bidder. Understand that the bids came in high and that they were rejected, but there's a comment or note in the report that says contingent upon DOT. I'm wondering why that even needs to be in there. There was the decision to reject all bids because they were, they came in too high, or the single bid came in too high. What was the contingent upon DOT? Was that just DOT authorization? I mean, I received a letter saying that we should just carry it out when it makes sense, essentially, as it came down to.
Right, right. I was just being careful because of all the regulations on this funding, and I found out from Cedar Corp., which is the management consultant for DOT, it's a local decision, so we can go forward with that.
I just wanted to make, thank you.
So, well, I'm sorry. So you were rejecting the bid because of the information received from the DOT? I mean, we're not waiting for any authorization from them that then might revive that bid, are we?
No.
Okay. The bid is going to be rejected.
Right.
Oh, right, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thanks.
Alderperson Furkey, you're next, please.
Dave, this is to you. As far as the number five with CNN Railroad, have you had any response from them at all? I mean, they weren't at our meeting or at the meeting, and are they just kind of blowing us off, or what's the deal there?
Well, I haven't started, I contacted them before the meeting a little bit. I'll start now, and if this passes council, to try to get some information from them. Kevin Soucy's been returning, he's a PR representative in Washington DC. He usually will respond to my emails when I email him about an extra-long train, but I don't see anything change after, but he notes that I've emailed him.
Thank you. Any, Alderperson, are you finished? All right, thank you. Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding the track there on West Grand, one of the things I remember being told is that Allied Chemical had rights to a spur for their service. Is that still, is that still correct?
Yes, that's correct. We had a study prior to reconstructing West Grand Avenue where the Department of Transportation looked at relocating the railroad when we were looking at West Grand, and we had met with Canadian National. There is a plan where it would go up on the West City Limits, but Canadian National, or it was Wisconsin Central at that time, didn't want to discuss it because Allied Chemical was a revenue-producing, for them, business. So either that would have to be relocated or closed down, and then they would consider a relocation of the railroad at that time.
Okay. And there's no possible for that long train going through town, going up to the power plants, they just won't move it to the west side of town so that the Grand Avenue tracks, while they're there, are not used for long trains, but used for local service as need be? Can they do that?
Well, they have no other route. We would have to construct a new track on the West City Limits coming in under the Highway 73 overpass, and then remove the track downtown. But they won't discuss it until they have that one revenue-producing business no longer exist.
All right, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion or any requests to speak, moving to a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Next item on the agenda, item C is the Human Resources Committee meeting held August 26th, item, and then there's also on September 2nd. Alderperson Whirl, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow councilmen, members at home. There's two reports this evening for the Human Resources Committee. First one, the Human Resources Committee met 4:00 Monday, August 25th, 2014, in the third-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. All others are on file in the clerk's office. Item two, consider a request from the mayor to approve a paid internship held over from the July 1st committee meeting. There was a motion and a second to approve the request from the mayor for a paid internship. Motion carried. See attachment one. Item 3A, in open session, a motion was made and seconded to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851E, deliberating and negotiating the purchases, purchasing of business, purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a roll call vote taken, motion carried unanimously. B, in closed session, as noted above, the committee discussed collective bargaining strategy. There is a motion and a second to adjourn. The meeting adjourned in closed session at 5:05 PM. Moving on to report number two. Item one, the Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, in the third-floor conference room. All members were present also. All others attending are on file in the clerk's office also. Item two, discuss HSA city contribution for retirees for 2015. There was a motion and a second that the city's final contribution to the retirees' HSA will be 1,000 for family and 500 for single coverage in 2015. This will be the city's final contribution to the retirees' HSA. Motion carried. Item three, discuss and approve a job evaluation for the public access multimedia specialist position. There is a motion and a second to approve the job evaluation for the public access multimedia specialist position at grade four with a starting salary of $37,472. Motion carried. Item four, a discussion regarding organizational structure and possible elimination of a position within the public access department. There is a motion and a second to eliminate the position. Motion carried. Item five, A, in open session, the committee will go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. Motion carried. In closed session, as noted above, the committee discussed compensation and possible separation benefits for an employee due to a possible job elimination. C, there was a motion and a second to return to open session. Motion carried. And there was a, excuse me, to go, to return to open session. A motion was made and seconded to approve a separation benefit of $3,500 plus unused personal time payout for the current public access clerk due to elimination of her position. That motion carried. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:18 PM. With that, I would like to move for adoption and place them on file.
I have a motion to approve by Whirl and a second by Dolan. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Raume, please.
Again, I guess, just a question. Item two of the first report, I guess, did we see what, I don't remember, seeing what the paid amount is for the internship?
It's not in the packet, but I just.
No, it was in the follow-up information.
I went back and through, back and forth, and I didn't find it, so.
The follow-up information that I sent you indicated it was 7.25 per hour. The person will work less than 20 hours per week up to a maximum of $1,000.
And I guess I would entertain a friendly to include that in the motion for the record, if so choose.
I'll move.
Have the request or the motion to reflect that. Chad, did you want to reflect that in your motion to reflect the 7.25 per hour hourly rate with the hours not to exceed $1,000? Okay, is there, we accept it in your second? Okay. Any further discussion or requests to speak? Movements to approve the report with that edit? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. We've got three members that need to confirm, it looks like. Alderperson Raume, Stack, and Dolan. There we go.
That's all they did, but maybe not.
Thank you. Now we're almost there. There we go.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's. It was less complicated.
Okay, and the lights were better. I don't even remember the lights. Item 12, miscellaneous reports. Item A, the City Treasurers Report for July, the Park and Rec Commission held August 27th. Item C, Police and Fire Commission, held August 13th. Item D, the Waste Water Treatment Commission, held the 6th of August and 3rd of September. The Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Monthly Report for August. The McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held August 20th. Item G, Zoning Board of Appeals, held September 9th. Item H, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Quarterly Report for April, May, and June of '14. The Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Organizational Report, or Summary for August. And item K, the Housing Authority, held July 30th. Excuse me. Alderperson Stack.
Just, it's not listed here, but we received a packet from Water and Light that was about 52 pages long. And I understand why they sent it out that way, as a means to conserve paper or whatnot. But, you know, scrolling through it on the computer is no fun. At least, if nothing else, the financial information could be made available in paper form like we get our reports, our other reports, you know? So for Water and Light, if you could print out the financial information at the end of the report. Thank you.
Communicate that request to them. Any other discussion? Alderperson Kellogg, please.
With regard to the McMillan Library, McMillan Library is the jewel of Wisconsin Rapids as far as I'm concerned, being needs of children, youth, adults, and the elderly, with many of the programs that they offer. And Ron McCade is retiring at the end of this year, and I'm not sure if the council persons may know that, or the public may know that. But I would hope that the common council could acknowledge all his excellent tenure while he was in Wisconsin Rapids in November, December of this year.
Thank you. Any other discussion, requests to speak? Seeing none, entertain a motion on the reports.
Move to approve, place on file.
I have a motion to approve by Kirkpatrick, seconded by Dolan. Any requests to speak? Seeing none, moving to a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Item 13 is items for new business at the October 21st council, is an election of a two-person member to the Ethics Board, which I understand that you would take letters of interest at the clerk's office for that. When do they do in the clerk's office? The Friday before the council meeting? Okay. So the second Friday, I believe, or it might be the Friday before the council. I won't say the second, it might be the third. Item 13B is an ordinance regarding social hosting, which you'll see more information about. Item 14 is referral of communication to committees. There's none listed. Is there any referral of communication to committees? Seeing none. Item 15 has been disposed of per the clerk's note. The item has been dealt with. Item 16 on our agenda is adjournment. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Raume, seconded by Dolan. All in favor? opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here, and those watching at home.